The minute twenty-six, Senator Hesletun Guahan is back in session. We are on the second reading and we are resuming on Bill 173-36 LS. Sponsor Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you colleagues for your patience. Madam Speaker, I move to accept Bill Number 173 LS as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing and further substituted on the floor. This is as introduced by myself and co-sponsor by the Committee Chair, Senator Joe St. Augustine. It's an act to amend subsection 1115 of Chapter 11, subsection 9112 of Chapter 9, subsection 117 of Chapter 1, subsection 14105 of Chapter 14, and subsection 13103 of Chapter 13, and to add a new subsection 15110 to Article 1 of Chapter 15, and a new subsection 1124 of Chapter 1, all of Title III Guam Code annotated and its relative to addressing and modernizing election-related issues inclusive of write-in votes, counting provisional ballots, electoring at polling places, and the cancellation of the primary election in certain circumstances and vacancies. Madam Speaker.
On the motion to accept Bill Number 173-36 LS as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing and further substituted on the floor, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, the motion carries. Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you colleagues. I move to resolve into Committee of the Whole for the purpose of deliberating Bill Number 173 LS as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing and further substituted on the floor, and that the Committee Chair be present for the Committee as a whole, and that we invite the panel guests from the Guam Election Commission. Madam Chair, Madam Speaker.
On that motion to resolve into the Committee of the Whole, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We will now resolve into Committee of the Whole chaired by Senators St. Augustine.
Committee of the Whole is called to order. Materials for the Committee of the Whole are in Shared Session Google Drive folder label 1.21.22. Committee of the Whole, proposed amendments must be submitted in writing to the clerk via email 36glcession@gmail.com. Amendments not in writing will be called out of order. My colleagues, if you have any amendments, please start submitting it. Rules of engagement. There will be three rounds for discussion. We will have two rounds of questions for the panel. We've each senator allotted five minutes for questions, not including responses. So the time that we measured is only on when the senator is speaking, all right? Time to speak may not be used from more than one member to another. A member who uses the member's time on a question, use all the member's time on that question and may not later speak, even if all the time was not used. At the completion of the two rounds of questions, panelists will be excused until called upon for the next bill to be discussed if needed. Third round is for the amendments or comments. Speak on the bill to the bill as discussed. After we complete the amendments in the bill, I will allow the sponsors to close and I'll entertain a motion of recommendation of the Committee of the Whole. After complete discussion of the bill, then I will entertain motions to rise from the Committee of the Whole, at which time I will report out the bill as recommended by the Committee of the Whole. Thank you. Now we will be discussing Bill 173-36 LS as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing and further substituted on the floor, and act amend section 1115 of Chapter 11 and section 9112 of Chapter 9, section 1117 of Chapter 1, section 14105 of Chapter 14, and section 1303 of Chapter 13, all from Title III Guam Code annotated, and to add section 15110 to Chapter 15 and section 1124 to Chapter 1, both of Title III Guam Code annotated, relative to addressing and modernizing election-related issues inclusive of write-in votes, counting provisional ballots, electioneering at polling places, the cancellation of the primary election in certain circumstances and vacancy. And I call on the Sarn Arms to swear in the panel, and the panel today is Ms. Maria Pangolinin, the Director of the Guam Election Commission, and her staff, Tom St. Augustine. Please rise.
Please raise your right hand. Under penalty of perjury, you all affirm that any and all information that you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as help you got. Mr. Chairman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Sarn Arms. I now call on Senator Moylan, the author of the bill, to please give his opening statement, and then we'll begin the two rounds of questioning. Senator Moylan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the Guam Election Commission representatives here today to answer our questions on today's bill, 173. Thank you, colleagues, once again for your patience as we work through this bill together. Just really summarize, what we're really helping to do with this bill, with the Guam Election Commission, is modernizing what they see that could be really helpful to expedite the process and make things accurate for them when we have our upcoming election here, starting with the cancellation of a primary election for certain circumstances when, well, we do not need one because there are not enough members in the election process that we would have to have a primary election for that, to be further explained by the Election Commission here today. Further classifying what are the write-in votes to something as easy enough but important to the Election Commission that, you know, when you circle in the ovals for the write-in candidate, you have to do both things, and writing in the person's name, to include as well as the polling places, you know, what constitutes 100 feet away from the polling place, and how the names appear on the ballot. In addition, we are including what happens to the seat of the Washington representative if there are vacancy occurs, and how that is worked into with the federal law requirements to filling in these vacancies as well. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to the discussion with our panel here today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. We will now begin the first round, and we'll begin with Senator Clint Regal. Do you have any questions for the panelists? No questions? Senator Peter Thalley, do you have any questions? Senator Frank Blas, do you have any questions? None. Senator Telo Tidaway, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, Maria and Tom. Thank you for being here this afternoon to answer a few of our questions. And, you know, I had the opportunity during our break to speak with you, Maria, regarding legislation, but the legislation I was looking at was different. It was a bill that I was looking at was earlier today, and now this one was submitted by 3:00 this afternoon, which was different. So I had a couple amendments that I wanted to proffer, and I was talking to you about it, and I was also talking to you about the perspective of a candidate versus the perspective of what Guam Election Commission does, and they do a great job, you know, and your staff are very attentive to the needs of candidates that come in, but there's a whole different world out there when it comes to the candidates themselves and what they have to go through. And, you know, I asked you a question with regards to the cost of not having a primary, you know, for certain elected offices. And if it was really substantial, you know, let's say the mayor still have to go through a primary because there's more than two, and for that village, either on the partisan sides, different, you know, both sides, at least, let's say Democrats have only had one, but the Republicans have two on that side, then has to go through a primary. But then I asked, well, where can we really have that savings? If we were to look at, you know, it's another elected official, which is the nonpartisan. And in that discussion, you told me that that's a substantial amount of savings for the Guam Election Commission because that's on a separate ballot. So I can see that clearly because now you have to print out a whole, you know, the cost that's associated with that. And in the event, let's say there is the Attorney General, for instance, and there's only two individuals running, wouldn't you think that that'd be something that would be helpful for the Guam Election Commission to consider in bypassing the primary for those individuals and go straight to the general since there's only two? And I probably did the whole, but please feel free, Maria, to start from the beginning on how you feel that this might help with the nonpartisan and the savings that we can receive there versus what this bill does right now and the inclusion of nonpartisan. Okay.
Should the nonpartisan election be canceled because there are two or less candidates on the ballot? Right at the very top, we eliminate one ballot sheet. The cost of a ballot at this time is about, I believe landed is 33 cents, printed is 53 cents, if I'm not mistaken, and I don't have that handle. And on top of that, with the operations, we won't have to count, you know, a whole set of ballots, whereas if we still have only two or less candidates, that gives the people of Guam additional hours to wait while we count those ballots.
So there's a substantial savings as well as, you know, not really a need, especially if there's nothing in this law and it requires these two individuals to go through a primary if there's only two, and then it kind of defeats, you know, what we're trying to do here, one, you know, making it, simplifying it for the Election Commission as well as, you know, cost efficient, you know. I do want to ask you with this section regarding the public auditor election, can you tell me if, based on, you know, section 1903 of the public auditor election, the public auditor shall be elected by the voters of Guam in a general election occurring in the same time as a general election for mayors? I always thought the public auditor would have to be, it's only in the general that are public auditors to be based on this section, 1903?
Or maybe, there is another section where the public auditor is in the primary, so...
Okay. Thank you so much for that. So how would you feel about including a nonpartisan into this legislation?
Actually, the Guam Election Commission has always been, you know, that was part of our recommendation inside the public hearing and also inside our election comparative analysis report. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria, for that. And the last one I had is, Bill 174 was debated on the floor, and there was a section in it with regards to the effective date. And during our conversation that we had with each other, I talked to you about the effective date, and by, you know, mirroring the same bill that was just, you know, passed into the third reading file beginning January 2023, considering it's an election year and the climate, and especially for something like this where, you know, people who are just running for the first time, the primaries to them is considered an opportunity, you know, to be recognized. How do you feel about changing that date to the same date as the last bill that we spoke on, on Bill 174?
You know, okay, so you're asking me if we make the effective date of 173, January That's the pleasure of the legislature. We're okay, we make the recommendation, we thank you for, you know, bringing it this far on. So it's up to the, we made in Bill 173, some of the sections were actually part of our recommendations, so we thank the legislature for supporting us with those recommendations. With regard to the effective date, it's the pleasure of the legislature.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You'll turn the next round.
Thank you, Senator Telo. Senator Sabina Perez, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to Ms. Pangolinin and Mr. St. Augustine. I guess the question I have is, first of all, I appreciate that you reviewed the bill and provided the recommendations. Can you just provide some confirmation that any of these changes are consistent with any of the grants that you're receiving, federal grants? Is that one of the considerations that you had?
Well, directly, none, but with regard to HAVA, that's the Health America Vote Act, and YUOKAVA, it just gives us a huge challenge to send the 45, to meet the 45-day requirement to send out the general election ballots. That's in 173. In 174, in 173, I don't see anything directly related to the HAVA grant.
Thank you for that response. And then I noticed in your comments, there was some reservation regarding aligning organic act with the election of the Washington delegate, I believe. Have you reviewed the current substitute bill? Is the language there sufficient to address that?
Do I have the most current?
Yeah, just if you had a chance to review the most current version.
Senator, I'm not familiar with 48 USC 1712, the US Code, so walking in, I asked our legal counsel to look into it, but other than that, if it limits it to, is it limiting it to eight months? Yes, okay. If it's limiting it to eight months, I believe our testimony during the public hearing was that leaves a vacancy for a long period of time, and it is, you know, that's for the legislature to ponder. So that was our only comment, I believe, with whether it be eight months, or six months, or 10 months.
Thank you for that. And then if I could look at section one of the bill, I think, or at least the comments that you made regarding section one, regarding that there should be some clarification, what happens to independent candidates? Should a primary be canceled? So one of the potential outcomes could be that, you know, depending on how many independent candidates there are, there could be a lot of candidates in the general election or more. And are you prepared to, or I guess, how would you implement something like that?
We were, you know, we need to look into what the, with the, together with the legislature, work on doing that because right now, they must garner so many votes from the primary election. So if the legislature has specific questions as to how they want to deal with it, because if this law passes that we, that the primary elections be canceled where there is no contest, then the Guam Election Commission will look to the legislature to see how you want to deal with the independent candidates. And that must be, that should be addressed, whether they go on to the general, or what should be done. Picture this. If there's an independent candidate in the primary election, there would be, we would put everybody on the one page, and there will be the Democrats on the first column, the Republicans on the second column, and then the independents in the third column. And we will let the voter know that they can only vote in one column. In the primary. If the senatorial race was canceled because there were 15 or less for both the Democrats and the Republicans, we need some guidance as to how to deal with the independent candidate.
Would you have any recommendations?
You know, we know, the Guam Election Commission knows, that if we have excellent slate of candidates on the ballot, we will have more voters come out to participate. On that note, and I am no campaigner, and again, it is up to the legislature, that may be something where they can go straight on to, you know, I might be shooting myself on the foot, but that would be something where they go on to the general. And again, that's more, there's, yep, that's something to think about. And that's why that was, we addressed that in the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you for those responses. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Sabina Perez. Senator Manu Shelton, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Buenos ahorita. Thank you very much for being with us today. I have a question first about the write-in votes section. This is something we discussed at length during the public hearing. There was a lot of concern about whether or not this new procedure would be sufficient, especially in small races that might have a potential for runoff, and being able to see write-in votes clearly published somewhere for candidates and their supporters to view immediately after the election. And so I'm looking at the new language in this substitute version of the bill, which is not... in this substitute version of the bill, which is not exactly following the recommendation that you provided in your testimony. And if we can just discuss some of the differences that have to do with reporting and publishing the tabulation results. Can you explain to us how these results are reported, and the way they are published?
This law has gone back and forth. At one point in time, the names will be published only if it'll, at one point in time, names were not published. At this time, we have to publish. That means that we have to go through all the ballots and check each name. That takes a long time. With regard to reporting, what happens is, if it will not affect, if it will not affect the results of the election, we will just say total write-in votes, 626. And so in the scenario you put forth about people who are, about candidates who are campaigning, our new machines, and maybe this is something to think about, our new machines record or take a picture of each, takes a picture of each ballot. So we will have that if, and most important for the Guam Election Commission, if we get sued and we go to court, we have that as backup.
And are those records something that the public can request to see?
Okay, so there's a, there's a section in the law that says we have to seal the ballots after certification, and only the board can open those ballots. So technically speaking, it'd be the board to decide whether we can show those, those ballots with the write-in votes.
And there is an avenue available to the public to seek that approval from the board?
Yes.
Okay. And when you say publish the results that make a difference to the ranking of the candidates, are you publishing them in the newspaper, on the website? Where does the public find that publication?
On our website.
Thank you very much. Okay. I'd like to also ask about elections to fill vacancies for the seats of the legislature and for the Washington representative. Can you discuss the length of time prior to the general election that is ideal for the Election Commission to conduct a special election?
Based on the timeline for the 2022 elections, June 28th is the last day to file for candidacy. So, well, opportune, maybe I'll address that question differently. If the congressional delegate must earn a majority, 50 plus one, Tom and I, on the way down, or I think it was Joe and I, on the way up, were discussing, what happens if a runoff is required? So when is it opportune to have a congressional delegate election because of a vacancy? You know, it, it's something that we have to keep throwing in our heads with, within our election timeline. And in our, in our testimony at the public hearing, we were, yes, you know, as voters of Guam, we at the Guam Election Commission recognizes that it's only one seat, and a vacancy for a longer period of time is detriment to Guam. And that's why we brought up that issue. With regard to, when is it opportune to have, whether it's eight months or so before the election, before, or during, even year, eight months before to have the election? For a senatorial race, for a mayoral race, we don't need a majority. But for the congressional delegate, what makes it complicated is it needs a majority. So is it ever opportune to have a, a special election for a vacancy for the congressional delegate? Maybe in the odd year.
Okay. And so in this substitute version of the bill, there is no time period before a general election, if a vacancy were occur, for us to have a special election to fill the seat of Washington delegate? And if we were to adopt that same language for a seat, for a member of the legislature, what would be the consequence? To delete the eight months for both positions?
Please restate the question.
Okay. In the substitute version of the bill, strike out the eighth month, eight month period prior to a general election for the Washington delegate position?
Mr. Chair, I'll save this question for the next round. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. Yes.
If I could just remind everyone, my apologies. So I sent on the chat an earlier subversion, but there's a new subversion on the drive, and a new subversion hard copy on your tables. And I, I want to prevent any misunderstanding. Yeah. So there's a new subversion on your tables. That's the current version we're discussing.
If my colleagues would like, we can give a few minute recess, go over it, make sure you're looking at, at the hard copy. So why don't we take a few minute recess,
Oh, see, she paused until...
Committee holds call back to order. We will now move to Senator Brown. Senator Brown, do you have any questions for the panel? Ma'am?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I did want to ask, because I see that the Washington delegate position has been added to this. Did we have, don't we don't have anything currently in the law to address? I know we've never been in a situation so far with regards to the Washington position, of that position being vacated prior to the end of the term. But what happens if this is not included with regards to making this concurrent with this eight-month period prior to an election? If a vacancy were to occur, that this language is proposing in this bill? If I can ask Ms. Pangolinan?
The Guam law does not address it. The Organic Act says that the Congress Congressional delegate must be elected and qualified.
I'm sorry?
The Organic Act says that the congressional delegate must be elected and qualified.
Okay, but nothing to address if there's a vacancy during the term?
In the Guam law, none.
So what would happen if there was a vacancy without this being addressed?
That would be...
Would it trigger an automatic election, no matter when the, you know, next regular election would occur? We don't know, it's undefined.
The governor or the governor and/or the legislature calls the special elections.
Okay, so right now, let's say it's three months before a regular election. If this language were not in here, then it would trigger a special election?
Not automatically. Not automatically, like the other offices. The other offices are addressed in Guam law.
Right, and we've had situations where, whatever reason, members have had to step down.
Yeah.
They always try and wait until March, so it doesn't trigger a special election because of the cost and all of those factors. So, okay, so this is currently not addressed if there's a vacancy prior to the...
Yes, ma'am.
...eight months. One other minor question I noticed with regards to a write-in candidate. If a voter writes simply the name of the write-in candidate but doesn't mark the oval, does that invalidate the name of the candidate that's written?
It does not count. The oval must be shaded in.
Why is that, out of curiosity, or do we just change it? I mean, you know, if my uncle had took the time to write Maria Pangolinan down, her, you know, your vote would not be counted because we didn't mark the oval?
I'm sorry, Senator, but the machine will not count it.
Okay, but it wouldn't trigger a hand count?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay, so marking the oval is what triggers the machine to reference if something's written or not?
That there is a write-in, yes.
I see. Wow, that would be unfortunate, though. I mean, most people might not even think it, if they think a write-in, that's their first thought, is simply to write the name of the individual versus marking the little oval there.
So since I've been in, we've had to go through the write-in, you know, go through the ballots again after an election. I don't, we don't see very many of those. Maybe, we don't even see those maybe.
Yeah, well, I've been in write-in elections that have been hand-counted. I think we did, like, what, 36,000 ballots? And they're, you know, they're doing this and holding up to see the pencil mark in the light, and, you know, is it Ben Pangolinan or Joanne Brown? Fortunately, it was three more for Joanne Brown. But, you know, I just wanted, out of curiosity, just to get that clarified, just because, I mean, most people might not even think about the significance of that little circle. So just wanted to clarify, but thank you for answering my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Tony Haddad, do you have any questions, sir, for the panel?
No questions, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, do you have any questions for the panel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the Election Commission Director and staff for being here. Okay. The first question I have is, as to the write-in votes, your recommendation, which is not in this substitute bill, but your recommendation says that GEC shall report on the results of the total write-in votes. What do you mean by total write-in votes?
If you voted for somebody, and Tom voted for somebody, or wrote in somebody, then there will be two write-in votes that we will report.
Will you report names? Does that include a name?
No.
So it will just say two write-in votes? It won't say one for Tom, one for Therese?
At this, yes.
Okay, what if I want to include names? Now, you're saying that that's a big burden on the commission? I'd like to see the names, because they might not meet this standard that you're saying receives enough votes to affect the ranking, so meaning they lost, they're like third, right, of the top two, or second. But still, I would like them to know, especially in these mayors' races, what their votes were. Is that a huge burden? Can we do that?
We...
I mean, even if it don't publish, but we report the names?
We've been doing it.
Yes.
We've been recording it, and we've been publishing it on the website. Can we do it? The answer is yes, we've been doing it.
The machine kicks them out, and you guys then hand-count write-ins? Or hand-collect the names?
Right now, we're trying, not right now, but in the last election, what we've done, we have the new machines that actually takes pictures of the ballots. So what we do, what we've done is, on our website, I believe, we just, we just post, we do post the names.
Okay. If I want to post the names, then should I change the word instead of total write-in votes, the website, the results of the write-in votes?
Madam Speaker, if you, if the law as it stands requires us to report the names, so it would, so the law does not have to be amended...
I see.
...with regard to write-in votes.
Good point, all right. Okay, on the, on the, on the delegates' office, so you made an excellent point in your recommendations in writing, where you said, you know, if we wait eight months, or we put an eight-month deadline, then we are without a delegate to Congress for eight months plus the rest of the term, which is, goes from November, December, January, right? So potentially 10 months. So, and you said, GEC is willing to work with the committee to find a better solution? So what would you recommend, better solution to this?
June?
June, because the deadline for the regular filings also in June.
Madam Speaker, June of an even year.
June where there is a general election?
Yes. Because it could be June of the odd year, and that's no problem.
No later than June of the even year.
Yes, or where there's a, you're right, where there's a general election.
Okay, can you just remind us how we did the mayor in Jotna when there was a vacancy? And then, right after that, there was a general election. We did a special election, and then a general election, right? And under the timings, right, there's no problem to do a special election vote and a general election vote same day, right?
That's the March, yeah.
Okay.
That's the eight months.
That's the June. No, that's June. Eight months or June?
Yes.
June.
No, I'm sorry, eight months is March.
Yeah. So if we said the deadline was June, you would be having the election on...
Yes, instead of...
...the general election day.
Instead of limiting it to March, right?
Right.
Yeah.
What if we remove the limit altogether? No limit? Yes.
Speaker, I'm just thinking about having a primary election, and even if we have it during the pri, if we have it during the primary election, we have the special election at the same time? That, maybe that's something to consider. Have the special election at the same time as the primary election, that's August. But that would fall, Speaker, that would fall, I think, June? Yeah, that would fall inside the timelines of 60 days to hold the special election.
All right, and then the last one is, Section 15110, this is cancellation of primaries. Could you just be very clear? If, for senator race, the senatorial race, if there are less than 15 Democrats and more than 15 Republicans, what happens?
It does not get canceled. The Democrats and the Republicans are still in the primary.
Both.
Both. Okay. Speaker, since you brought that up, maybe it's a good time to bring up that I wonder if the legislature wants to put if equal or fewer than?
Right, so that was your recommendation. I do intend to restore your recommendation to the if equal or fewer than. Okay, so if equal or two or fewer than the maximum number of candidates, so this is, it's just not clear, because you don't talk about party here. So there are less than the number in one party, but more in one, and you're saying that goes forward? According to your recommended language, that would go forward?
You know, Speaker, I don't, I don't remember what, we did recommend, Speaker, about removing the nonpartisan election, too. I don't know how that, if, maybe it wasn't addressed in the original bill, I'm not sure. But in the very, in the very get-go, we've always recommended to remove the nonpartisan election from the primary.
Yes.
Yeah.
So if we took your recommended language, and we said, can advance to the general election for any partisan or nonpartisan elected office, would that suffice?
I think so.
And how would we incorporate the independent candidates? Would we say maximum, the equal to or fewer than the maximum number of party or independent candidates? If your council has examined that and can give us a recommendation for the independent word, where to put that, I don't know where to put that. I don't know how to incorporate your recommendation to include...
For the independent, okay.
So you're saying, this is not a, it's not a party thing. You're just saying if any party has more than 15, we go... You're just saying if any party has more than 15, we go forward? That all, even, there's only eight on the Democrat side, we're still going to have a primary on the Democrats? And you're saying that doesn't increase the cost? Is that why? Same cost to have Democrat and Republican races for the same office?
When, when we talk about cost, most of it, Speaker, with regard to canceling the primaries for these individual races, most of it would be in personnel, the personnel costs. It takes a long time to review one name versus reviewing the 13 names. That, that takes, believe me, it takes a long time. We, you know, we go back and forth with our, with our, with the, before we print the ballot. So, the, other than personnel costs, the removal of the nonpartisan takes away variable costs, which is the one ballot sheet and the counting of the ballot sheet.
Okay, then, just to be clear, that your recommended language and the current language in the bill, the subbill, both, both would have the same result? That if Democrats and Republicans, one was higher, one was lower, still both of them would have a primary, right?
Right. If, sorry, Speaker, so that we're clear.
If, if, if one party only had more than 15 candidates, both parties are still going to have a primary?
Yes.
Okay. And just to be clear, so for the Washington delegate, if there are two people in one party, there will be a primary for all parties?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Mrs. Pangolino, on the section, section five with regard to names, I understand that this was recommended because we did have a situation in an election pass where a candidate put forth a nickname in his nominating petition and that had to be reconciled at the board level to determine if it was a valid nomination petition or not, right? And the board, I believe at the time, appined that it was not a valid nomination because the person represented was not using his legal name. So, so this, in fact, does that. I just want to ask and just confirm, we do have situations where the name, this is proposing then that only a person may use his name that appears on a birth certificate or passport or naturalization certificate or some court-ordered document or other things, real ID, marriage certificate. So, for purposes of the nomination petition, that's the case. But then, when it comes to the actual ballot, that is where a person may elect to include a nickname or something in that, right? So, that satisfies the worry about identity and people appealing to voters in the name that they're most commonly known as, a nickname. Can you, can you just confirm that that's it? So, it doesn't hurt someone who has a nickname and is known by nickname in any way? Can you just comment on that, please?
So, on both, on both the nominating petition and the ballot, the candidate has option to include the nickname. But, on the nominating petition, the legal name must be succinct, must be together. Then, they can put the nickname at the end and that will, that will meet the Guam Election Commission requirements or the law requirements. For, on the ballot, the first line on the ballot will be the legal name. Underneath the ballot, underneath the first line, the first line, which is your second line, every candidate has two lines. So, they can include the nickname or whatever is appropriate under the legal name.
All right. I had a second observation that I want to share and maybe you can comment on whether my observation is, is rational. In your testimony that was submitted on October 11th and the, my preceding, the colleague that spoke to me prior to me had discussed this, the inclusion of, addressing the issue of independent candidates. And you had proposed in your submission that we look at Section 15207 and also at 15404 of the code. The, you know, and the, and the issue is, if you, if you don't have a primary election for an independent candidate, does that candidate automatically advance in the general election? My concern about that is two things. One is, every independent candidate, as I understand, still has to meet a minimum number of votes or obtain a minimum number of votes to advance to the general election, right? So, if they got 400 votes, for example, that wasn't a percentage, a certain percentage of the majority of voters, they don't advance. Under, under present circumstances, right? If we were to go with this notion that if there's no challenger to that independent race, they automatically advance to the general, the problem I have with that is, it really is a loophole that, that would cause problems. Because if you think about it, if, if I had to, if I as a, say partisan, if I as a Democrat had to contend with, say I was number 16, with 15 other candidates for a race, but I knew that if I ran as an independent unchallenged, I would automatically advance to the, the general election, the loophole for me would be to run as an independent. Because it's guaranteed that no matter how many votes you get, if you're uncontested or there was, you know, that, that you would automatically go forward. So, I mean, do you see that as a possible loophole?
Well, the race will not be canceled if there are more than 15 in either the Democrat or the Republican party. So, so, would there be a reason to run independent? Otherwise, if the race is not canceled, you know, then the independent still is in the running amongst the Democrat and the Republican and the independent.
That's true. But, under, under a scenario, if, we, we have very rarely had a situation, I think we, maybe we had one situation that I recall in recent memory where somebody ran as an independent. And in that case, there was that one person. So, the, I'm just saying that, that, you know, if you were to, if you were to look for a way that somebody could, could bypass having to contend with somebody in the, in the, they could just go that. If there, if you happen to have just one person go independent, that one person automatically advances. And that, to me, is, it, it really is an unfair advantage in the, in the electoral process. I just want to make that observation. I see that it, of course, if everybody thinks it's a loophole and jumps in, then it becomes contended. But, right now, under the scenario, it's not common for somebody to go independent, you know, in our community. But, we have had situations where someone will go independent or has. And that person would, if, under this scenario, with this recommendation, would automatically go forward. So, I don't know that that's the sort of situation that we want to create. Because then it, it makes it harder also for the, the votes to, to tally up, to advance. If you have too many, and in some situations, you know, the majority of people that would vote for that person to advance is really such a marginal number. But, the threshold, though, would still be met. They would still have to meet a, my time is up. But, but the threshold is what I'm concerned about.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Duñez?
This is Massey, Mr. Chairman. I think I'm going to follow along with my retiring speaker, my colleague, see if I can clear this up. Because I do think that the Guam Election Commission, Maria, you're, you are pointing out to us that we may encounter a legal conundrum here, basically, if we do not address this cancellation. But, if I'm following you correctly, because I'm going to make a proposition here, if I'm following you correctly, it's only the cancellation of the primary whereby everybody advances. So, under the scenario where 16 candidates qualify, then that's done deal because there's going to be a primary anyways. So, yeah.
Yes, Senator, that's correct.
Because no, no, just like the speaker mentioned, there's going to be no, there's going to be, if you have eight on one and 18 on the other, there's a primary, no matter what, for everybody.
That's correct.
And so, the minimum requirements for the independent will still need to be garnered in order to advance.
That's correct.
So, if it's canceled, it's canceled for everybody. If it goes, it goes. So, my thinking here, Maria, is, if we're under 151110, cancellation of the primary election for certain circumstances, notwithstanding any other provision of law, rule or regulation to the contrary, if fewer than the maximum number of partisan candidates, partisan or independent candidates, I think we can solve it. Because I remember, this is familiar to me because I, I was the author of the Two-Sided Ballot, which has really lowered the number of spoilt ballots. But, the, the situation in which my good colleague from Santa Rita is discussing was that situation where an independent did file. But, that, that scenario wasn't a canceled primary anyways, though, because there were sufficient candidates. So, the rule was amended by my good colleague from Baragada because I remember I was off filing, dealing with this, the phone calls that came in. So, then it, basically, we have a very simple situation for that. It reverts back to the regular ballot in the event an independent runs for office in order to qualify to advance. So, it's not rocket science. We go to the regular standard if an independent. But, I, I'll run this, but could you run this through? I guess we should run it. Because I, I could envision, it's going to go to your legal counsel if an independent candidate does file. And there is, there is a sufficiency, if we pass this law this way, that the primary is canceled for certain races, then an independent would have legal standing to say, hey, everybody else is going, I'm going too, as long as I met the minimum requirements. Do you see it that way? Well, I'm going to proffer the amendment then when the time comes and see where the chips fall. Because, once again, I just want to be all, you know, ultimately clear with our colleagues here and we'll discuss it when the amendment's proffered. But, it's very clear to me that if an independent does meet the minimum requirements and the primary is canceled by virtue of the fact that the, the, there's, there has been not, the threshold hasn't been met under the way we're going to pass this. If we pass it into law for a primary, then everybody goes. Partisan and independent.
So, Senator, you're proposing that amendment? That's.
Yeah, I, I think it's pretty clean and simple reading, really, really here. If you just go, if fewer than the maximum number of partisan candidate or partisan or independent candidates who can advance the general election.
That's the decision of the legislature.
Yeah, I know. Maria, I just think we have to do it. Because it would be crazy to get into a situation where if we're going to change the law, you're going to have a situation, if an independent candidate files, there's no adds or busts about it. An independent candidate will have legal standing to come before the commission and you would have to convene a meeting and your counsel will have to determine what's the status. Because if the primary election, I can envision, is canceled because there's 15 Republicans, 15 Democrats and one or two independents files and meets all the minimum requirements, there is no reason why that independent candidate should not advance under what we're doing with the law right now. Okay, well, I'll proffer and see where it goes. Thanks for your advice, Maria. But, I'm glad you guys brought it up because this is the time to solve this if this is what we're going to do.
Senator, I will just clarify it, please. The advice was to look at and address the issue.
Right.
Okay.
Well, I mean, it's the proper advice. Because if otherwise, no matter what, we were going through the exercise of conducting a primary, if there still is non-sufficient candidates to require the primary for all for advancement, then it makes sense because that's what we're doing here. I mean, if we're, if we're basically, you know, making a determination now that we're, we're canceling that primary and the work for those offices doesn't need to be done, we are establishing an opportunity for a legal conundrum to come up. Because otherwise, it would have advanced anyways. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I'll proffer the amendment.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Senator Moynihan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There were some good questions regarding the timeframe referenced to the changes we, that we wanted to add regarding the, if there was a possible vacancy for the delegate. And, from my understanding, with the Election Commission, we were looking for some recommendations and we actually did get some really good recommendation from Legal that provided us with some wording that needed to be included. And that's reference to the federal guidelines, 48 USC subsection 1712A. Legal did provide in their write-up a discussion about that. Since we are here present, I'm hoping that I can, Mr. Chair, if I can kindly have Legal define this for us so, as a whole, we can understand it clearer. So, if they could reference and explain, the vacancy occurs under the federal guidelines, 48 USC subsection 17112. If I can ask Legal to explain that to us, please.
Okay, we're back from recess. Senator Moynihan, you're recognized.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Legal also. But, just to expedite this and keep it short, I'll read the, what it references to, not necessarily timeframes, but it defines when the seat needs to be filled for the delegate under certain circumstances. And it reads, "The delegate from Guam shall be elected at large by majority of the votes cast for the office of delegate. If no candidate receives such majority, on the 14th day following such elections, runoff elections shall be held between the candidates receiving the highest and second-highest number of votes cast for the office of delegate. In the case of permanent vacancy of the office of a delegate by reason of death, resignation or permanent disability, the office of delegate shall remain vacant until its successor shall have been elected and qualified." And then, we reference in the bill that there and prior to eight months before the date of the next general election of the Washington delegate representative. So, just to verify with GEC that this is still workable for them after, based on the vacancies as defined by the federal government and then the timeframe that we're looking at in the bill of eight months? If you can verify that, please.
Senator, yes, it's, it works within the timeframe. But in our testimony, we wanted to bring to the attention of the, to everyone's attention that eight months is a long time to be without a congressional delegate, a Guam congressional delegate. So with regard to what our testimony said, we said we will work with the legislature to come to a timeframe, an acceptable timeframe.
Okay, that's clearly understood. Thank you, Maria. And I believe possibly my other colleagues have some adjustments in that to expedite it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. No other, no other questions.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. So that has completed the first round, correct? Or you're still in the first round? Okay, Senator Sinagastin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, my colleagues have asked many questions. Concern, Ms. Panglinen, on page one of the substitute bill, line seven, if equal to and fewer than the maximum number of partisan candidates, and we add nonpartisan, would that suffice to cover the independent? Yes, no?
Ooh, that's a good question, Senator, because the, is the independent a partisan candidate?
Independent is, there's no party. They're not Democrat or Republican. I'm just asking that question. Maybe you can tell us if, if need be then, as my good colleague from Timoting stated, add the word independent, then so be it. Then we'll just add it. And then the next section I got there, as we go down to line eight on that same page one, representing both political parties, maybe we need to strike that out, the political party part? So that we make sure we're not talking about political parties no more? Because why? There's not both, it's, could be three, right? Okay, and then on the, on the next page, page two, I'm just going over, my colleagues, I'm just going over the bill of possible amendments so that it's all germane when we get to the amendment section. Then maybe on line nine on page two, then maybe we add the OPA and the Attorney General's office, correct? Would, would, would that be?
Yes, sir.
Okay for the Exchequer Commission? And it'll make sense in reference to all the agencies that are running? All right. And then on the last one, I think when my colleague brought up about the delegate, the state, the seat of the Washington representative, because of the vacancy occurs under the, that would be line 15, the 48 USC section 1712. Because the way that's defined, it refers to resignation, death, or disability. Am I correct? That being said, then maybe we just strike out the eight months and not have to deal with that. Because it's whenever those occurs, it becomes a vacancy. Am I right? Correct? Following the statute, the federal statute, unless we define it differently.
Right.
Okay, and at the same token, I want to make you sure that we all understand it. When the vacancy happens, it happens. Then that's when you mentioned earlier that the Guam legislature would have to basically come in and if this bill passes or doesn't pass, the legislature would have to call for a special session, discuss for an election. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now on that same token, as we, as we state vacancies, like the way the federal statute declares, right? Death, resignation, or disability, correct? A vacancy occurs only when those three happens or when the individual doesn't run no more. And its terms don't end until the end of December 31st. Actually, January 1st. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so in other words, if the individual doesn't, doesn't resign, is not deaf, or is not disabled, the position is not vacant, correct?
As far as the Guam Election Commission, yes.
And it's also as far as the federal code is concerned. I just want to make sure we clearly understand that because for any of the candidates that's gonna run for, for office, their concern should be to pick up the packet and run for office or don't run for office. Because there's no requirement for anybody to resign, to run for office. A good example, I'm making it very clear is the same thing that happened to the OPA office. The Speaker did not run, did not resign from the legislature until he got elected to OPA. Then he resigned. Then there was a vacancy, but it didn't matter because it ended the year. Am I correct? Because I remember the Speaker left in August after the election for OPA.
Sir, if I remember correctly, he was running for a nonpartisan office, I think he had to resign.
After he got elected.
No, no, before.
I don't, I don't remember him resigning then because he was still the Speaker, all the way when we were discussing it.
He had to resign, sir, because he was going to run for a nonpartisan office.
Okay, okay, then, thank you for correcting me. So other than that, I have no other further questions. I think the amendments, and at least my colleagues all understand what amendments could come out, and it'll be germane to the bill, and then we can move on. And it's pretty much clear. And then on the last page, page six, the effective date, line six, effective date, would you, would the Guam Election Commission be favorable that the effective date not be upon enactment but until January 2023?
That's okay, sir.
That would be okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. I believe now we've completed round one, correct? So we will go to round two now. Senator Turlahi, Peter Turlahi. Senator Blas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the conversation, and I'm still, I'll work with the good senator from Timoting with regards to trying to develop some language to deal with the issue with regards to the independent candidate. Because then I don't know whether this would, if the language here then would affect the threshold that's necessary.
Senator, so we had suggested in our, in the, in our testimony to take a look at the specific sections that affect the, to, to maybe if, you know, look at those specific sections and maybe changes are required to those sections.
Okay, so that, I think there could be prudent that there would need to be a reference to those specific sections into this, into this new, because it's a new law. I mean, new section that's gonna be added in. I just don't want it to be confused. Now with regards to the congressional representative, is that a Guam election or is that a federal election handled by Guam Election Commission?
It's a federal election, sir.
Okay, so my concern here is then this law, this, this, this legislation proposes then now to put new parameters onto a federally-held election or for a seat in a federally-held election. Can we do that?
Yes, sir. The states are left to decide how to elect their federal...
It's one thing to how to elect their federal, but then what, what do we do? Once we've elected and they've been elected, they've been represented, now we're looking at a situation where this individual has now either resigned, died, or was removed. That's still a federal...
So the, so what the Guam Election Commission looks at is that the, whoever replaces the person who's resigned or who's vacated the seat has to be elected and qualified. That's what the Organic Act says. The Guam law does not address what happens when there is a vacancy to that seat.
What does the federal law say?
It just says that they have to be, it's absent. It doesn't tell us how. Across the state, sir, there are different ways when there's a vacancy.
And I understand, because different states have constitutions. We have the Organic Act. That's the problem. Because the states, in, in, in the states, through their constitution, they are allowed to do this. You know, so that's why, you know, and I recognize because remember, this is, this is a position that was created and for some codified in the Organic Act. And I'm just concerned that, you know, I, I know what the dilemma is. Apparently, it's been absent, it hasn't been, it hasn't been discussed, never needed to be used. But just in case we're gonna do this, but do we have the authority to do that? Because this is a federal position.
In discussions with, I want to say even with our board and our legal counsel, a special election is in fact allowed with the Organic Act and the federal government.
Okay, I just, you know, again, you know, that's why I said, I mean, that we need to separate this because we're talking here about Guam law, but I didn't, then I distinctly recall, maybe it's because I ran for that seat at one point in time, you know, is, is that it's actually a federal election and whether or not we can, as Guam statute, local statute, affect basically what is a federal law in this case. Let me just, yeah, I'm sharing with the legal counsel so she knows where, as far as where I'd like for some advice on this. But I'm not gonna ask for a recess. I can go ahead and discuss with her as we continue on. Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Tiedegui.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maria, during the 2020 election where we didn't have a primary, and in fact, the delegate, you know, we didn't have a primary for that, you did research in, in being able to follow the guidelines for the federal government, whether to, if you can, not have a primary, right? And send all three to a general. Was that done with your legal in tow? And everything was checked out before moving forward in the 2020 election where we didn't have a primary?
Yes, Senator, we were with Legal all the time.
So you do have the leverage on, on the process of elections when it comes to the federal side?
Senator, besides our legal counsel, we do have communication with the US Department of Justice. And our communication with that, with them is specific to the UOCVA voters. But they, in 2020, we were in constant communication with the US Department of Justice together with our legal counsel.
And I'm sure if this situation comes up when there's a vacancy, the same will apply. And I appreciate...
Yes, ma'am, but the lead would be, if absent of a law, the lead would come from the legislature and the governor.
Absolutely, okay. I also like to appreciate the comments that we made. Earlier, I asked you about that section at the end where, you know, taking it to January 2023 instead, it was up to us. But I'm glad you answered again when the good chair asked, and you had no problem with that, you know, on the date. I think a lot of us are concurring to that. Also agree that, one more time, on the independent, you know, the section where we want to put a nonpartisan person in there to include independent in that section that the Senator from Gigo was mentioning, that it would be in the best interest to indicate independent then. I just wanted to verify, that's all, Maria.
Ma'am, again, in our, in our testimony in the public hearing, we had addressed the issue, or that issue should be addressed, independent, what we do if that office primary is canceled.
Okay, well, thank you so much for your time. I greatly appreciate being here and you, as well as you, Tom. You've been so helpful every time we've come down there for assistance. So appreciate the both of you for being here. Thank you.
Senator Ada, you're recognized.
I'd just like to thank the commission for being here to answer our questions, and I don't have any questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Brown. Senator Shelton. Senator Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, so it's, I do have a question regarding section seven of the bill in regards to filling a vacancy for the seat of the Washington representative. And so I know my colleagues have mentioned before that in that subsection B, so a vacancy occurs under 48 US Code, Section 1712A. And so what the conditions for a vacancy are, are three things: death, disability, and resignation. So in looking at current statute and Guam law, as you said, there is nothing in, in current statute that addresses vacancies for the Washington representative. But in comparing that to what we have for mayors and vice-mayors, there's a longer list that comprises when a vacancy happens. So for instance, in addition to those three things that were mentioned in the US Code, there's also a refusal or failure to assume office, a decision of a competent tribunal declaring void his or her election, conviction of a felony or crime involving moral turpitude, his or her change of residence from municipality in which he or she was elected, and then when an incumbent has sought and won election to another office and assumed the new office constituting voluntary relinquishment of the original office. So it appears that there's potentially maybe some gaps that are in this US Code. And I would like to request that maybe your legal counsel take a look at that or if you can review that portion and make any recommendations. Maybe not now, but if we can give you some time to review that. And two, if I can point out that in the legislature, there's even less requirements. It's not even, there's no list of, of conditions, I think. What it has here is basically that if there is more than one vacancy, it should be certified by the Guam Election Commission. So it doesn't really have any specific requirement. So I know that in the past, there were vacancies and they were filled. So if you can probably speak to, in the legislature, when there was a vacancy, how was that determined? Or if there's probably rules and regs that I'm not aware of, if you can clarify that.
Senator, so with regard to the vacancy of the congressional delegate, it is specified in the, in, or the Organic Act. So we have to stay within the Organic Act just like we cannot add on qualifications. The Organic Act tells us who's qualified to run. And so just like that, the Organic Act states when there's a vacancy. So we can, I, I don't think we can add on to that, but we will check with our legal counsel.
And so just for clarification, so what are the vacancies? What does the Organic Act view as vacancies, view as a vacancy?
I believe it's death, resignation, and...
What was the last one?
In, I'm sorry, I don't have it. Permanent disability is the third one.
So just to clarify, so there can't be any additional reasons for being considered vacant in that position?
I would consult with my legal counsel, but based on prior discussions, we cannot add on to that.
Okay, so that would require a change in congressional law for that to be okay? All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Perez.
Maria, can you just please explain, if we don't pass this bill, what happens right now if there are less than 15 Republican senatorial candidates and more than 15 Democrat senatorial candidates?
We still have, even with, we still have a primary.
For both?
For both.
All right, and what happens to the independents?
Okay. Okay, they must garner as the threshold number of votes.
In the primary?
In the primary.
Okay, so they're always put on a primary?
Yes.
Okay, so what happens if there are less than 15 Republicans, less than fif, or 15 Republicans, 15 Democrats, and less than 15 independents right now? Is there a primary?
Yes, there's a primary right now.
Okay, yes, that's what we've been doing. All right. Yeah, my concern is that the basis of changing what we're currently doing is supposedly to save costs, right? But you've said, I mean, is that going to save costs to remove that portion of the ballot?
Ma'am, yes, because the personnel costs involved.
Personnel, you keep saying this, but if we remove the nonpartisan ballots, that's a cost saver. But removing this legislative race, not necessarily except for personnel costs?
Overtime will go down, ma'am.
Because they're certifying the, the, what, the candidates?
No, that, no, the certification of the candidates has to be.
Yeah, but where's the overtime incurred?
Okay, it's the validation of the ballot. Going through, going through, let's say, 28 names, that takes many hours, many days.
After the election? When, when, what do you mean? Ballots? You mean they're looking at every single ballot? Please explain, yeah.
So to put Therese Turlahi on the ballot, okay, the first thing we do is we will put, we will put together, we will format a ballot. Then as candidates come in, we will start putting their names. That name gets reviewed at least 30 times. And that name, and then as soon, I've gone through where we've, the ballots, where we review it at least 36 times. And when we review it, we review every single entry in the ballot. Okay.
And that's incurring overtime?
Yes, ma'am. And there are 67 ballot types, 67 precincts. So each precinct has a different ballot.
Yes.
So we would go through those. Yeah.
All right, and then when you said, section 15207 provides independent candidates may file nomination papers for the primary. Then in 15404, independent candidates must meet certain thresholds to move on to the general. That's, that's a threshold that you just talked about. Okay. All right, then. All right, are there any other nonpartisan offices besides the OPA and the AG? Are the boards affected by this, or they are only on the general ballot?
Sorry, ma'am.
The boards and commissions? The?
They're only in the general.
Okay, so, all right. All right. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Duaneus, do you have any questions, sir?
I don't, Mr. Chairman. And in consultation with my colleague to the right, he has none either. So I propose we recess at this time. This should be the completion of the second round and then come back on Monday for amendments.
Are there any objections to that? That allow my colleagues the time to prepare your amendments, submit it to the clerk, clear through Legal? There being none, we will recess till Monday, 9 o'clock. But before we go on, I'd like to first thank the panel for being here. And you are no excuse.
Thank you, guys.
We will be, on Monday, when we, when we start up, before we do amendments, comments about the bill, then we'll go to the amendments, so that it'll be nice and clear. And I would ask my colleagues, if you have amendments, please share it with us all. Because there may be several of us that's got amendments, and we want to make sure everybody works as one. All right? Thank you, Maria. Thank you, Mr. Sinagastin. We are recessed until Monday, 9 o'clock.